So, Mr. Countryman asked me to talk a little bit about the admin team changes schedule. And added a few four professional development days to start the school year. Knowing that there's a few changes going on and anticipating potential changes down the road. So, I wanted to explain what those PD days look like and what and how they were utilized. I am now having the charge of playing some of our questions up. So. Try it earlier. There it is.
Can I get on your presentation?
Exit that. Do that.
It's on the slide. The second one I did.
There you go. All right, so I just got to kind of quickly talk about what we did and why we did some of the things to start the school year for teachers who started professional development. So, the first thing we did, there's been a lot of teachers who were apprehensive, I think, about coming back, knowing that.
You'll just touch again. There you go.
Worried about COVID, the spread of COVID, how would we be isolating kids if that became a potential issue? So, one of the things that we did is we brought out Dr. Dame Gerkin from the Divide Health Department. And she was, in my opinion, really good because she explained to the teachers some false information that's out there, information that maybe they will leak to be true, that that's just not how that works. She explained how the quarantines would work and how the health department would more or less be the ones to decide what students were quarantining, what teachers would have to, how that would work. She was very good and very helpful to answer a lot of the teachers' questions and kind of put their minds at ease with a lot of things. Mr. Bassett came in and he talked about the changes to the district as far as our cleaning procedures and how that would change for the teachers. What the expectations were as far as having desks cleaned and how the custodians would come in and use a different spray, how long that spray took to dry, whether the kids would put it in their mouth, all kinds of things that, you know, those teachers come in and they have questions about, you know, I've got a kid who's going to put a block in their mouth, what's going to happen? He answered a lot of those questions and helped put them on the right path as far as, again, I think, putting their mind at ease. And then Mr. Countryman spent time talking about the district procedures and how is the busing going to work? How is the children entering the school day? What's it going to look like? What are we expecting in classrooms? So, it was kind of a COVID morning to kind of kick off our welcome back for teachers. Next up, we had a remote learning day. And what we focused on there was if we go remote, we have a rough draft or an idea of what our remote plan would look like. I think that was actually before approval at the last board meeting. But kind of getting more into the details, nodding D's, crossing I's, hours, attendance, assignments, expectations, you know. I think the admin team and myself have our opinion, teachers also have their opinion. We wanted to get their opinion, get their thoughts, share that with them. And that's something that's still continuing. I know the admin team, the last two hour in-service also continued those discussions with those teachers, individual buildings, having more discussions because, quite frankly, what a high school looks like is different than what the elementary looks like. And how are we able to go about making sure that our remote plan works the best possible for as many people as possible? But then after that, what we did was some digital PD. And we had the teachers sign up, did thirty minute sessions on different learning platforms that were out there. And we had a lot of teachers who volunteered their time and their talents to just share different platforms and how they can maybe utilize matches remotely. But if we're here facing face, it was a good idea to start utilizing those platforms right now. That way, we're all on the same page and when that were to happen, the kids know how to use those things. And part of that day, we set up Padlet. And Padlet, I think everybody talked about it in June. As the principal, I got tons of, tons of calls when this all started with what's my kid's password, what's their username, how do they get to IXL, how do they get to all these things? It was, it was what I spent a majority of my day doing, was answering and calling parents, explaining. So, this is what they set up. It's on the website, so either remote or in the situation that we were to go remote, there is a Padlet spot on our school website now. And it's broken down by grade level. And so, the parents who have questions are what's my kid's assignment? Those are all up there and they're updated daily and weekly by our teachers right now. And that keeps them kind of organized and it's an online organizer for our kids. But the other thing that I think is nice for is this, it allows for any teacher to use any platform they want. So, if that teacher uses IXL, they can put the link and it's live right there. If that teacher decides to use Google Classroom, they can put that link there. So, they're not trying to coordinate all of these different links or all these different platforms, they're all available right there. So, if you wanted to see what that teacher had, you click there and right there is all of their stuff. And their videos and their platforms and their assignments is all right there for them. So, it's kind of a way to help organize our students and organize our parents in case we were to go remote. So, they worked on those, that is on our website, and our teachers are utilizing that right now in case, kind of just prepare themselves for it if we were to go remote. I think that's something that will really come and take the dividends on the future of the new administration. For me, I think the most important part of those two days, in my opinion, we know that there's going to be a gap in kids' learning. We can't take off twenty-five percent of the school year, take off the summer, and then know that there's also the potential that we could close down again and not think there's not going to be some gaps in kids' learning. And we know that, and we've known that all along. Well, I rarely give the state any credit because usually they're building things as they fly. A few places here, I think they did some things that were helpful for us. So, I wanted to kind of quickly touch on it. We put this gap analysis out for our teachers. And it really is pretty simple. It's a Google Doc with all of the state standards listed. And what we ask all of our teachers to do is go in there and look at those standards. What did you teach? What are you comfortable that your kids know? And what did you say, holy crap, we didn't get to this? And you can see that they filled this out. No, I'm not telling my kids, no, this standard or this standard, I know we have this one. They took some time to fill this out by, by grade level across the board. And what we did from there is we planned time that they would shift up a grade and down a grade to have conversations. So, that first grade teacher would go talk to that second grade teacher. And they would share, not just the standards, but you've got to understand, I've never taught a certain standard, I might not have the resources for it, I may not have the information that I need. So, they shared, had the opportunity to share resources, to share standards, to share, you know, what they're missing. And then we took an hour and we shifted down and had conversations with the grade below them. With, again, what did I miss and what did I try to teach or not teach? So, every tested subject and even the non-tested subjects had something that went across the board like this to just help us kind of get on the same page as far as what was taught or not taught last school year. From there, we asked them to build their power standards, which is basically what are your big rocks? You have this idea of you've got to teach the rocks who are face to face and the small pebbles we'll get to if we go remote. And those are going to be different this year for a lot of teachers because you may not have ever taught something, but you can't teach what you wanted to teach until the other, that previous topic was taught. So, after that, we had them sit down and kind of take some time to consider, what are your big rocks for this school year? What do you know that you have to get done face to face when we're here together? And so, we worked on that. And then the third one is one that I think is also, again, again, the state with the most credit, it's benchmark test. We didn't test last school year. But what we did do is they gave us all of those test questions and they provided this new benchmark test. And while we tested enough, I think everybody knows that, what this was is a great chance that kids basically take that test for absolutely no, not saying no credit, but there's nothing that's tied to it other than information for us as teachers and information for them to know. Every tested subject has the ability to take these benchmark tests and we've had a few teachers, Mrs. Taylor has taken some, Mrs. Turnbull was considering and they're working on it. And really, they take the test that's exactly like the state test would have looked like. And the only difference is it reports it back to us and not to the state. And it actually will break it down by standard, by question, by number of students. And we have an idea then, okay, this student from last year missed this, this, and this, we have to cover this. So, I think it's a pretty nice, neat tool, a lot of information has come from it. And a lot of teachers have taken advantage of this and will continue to take advantage of this. And what's nice is they can take each test twice. So, you can take it right now and find out, okay, what gaps do we have? And as a seventh grader, you could take that sixth grade test to find out, okay, there's some gaps in that sixth grade that they had, we've got to make sure we fix that. Or they can take the seventh grade test and say, okay, we're testing, yep, we feel confident that we've closed those gaps or at least know what those gaps are. So, like I said, rarely do I give them credit, I think this time they did nail it. So, a lot of good information, a ton of reports, a ton of information. And it's not going to the state, but it's going to the teacher. It allows them to get a plan their big goal for this school year and report. The next thing.
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah?
Would you think it's probably a great time to transition to that because there's no SLOs this year? Typically, those teachers in the room know that the SLOs, you give a pre-test at the beginning of the year called a student growth measure pre-test. And then you see their growth at the end of the year, which is the post-test. Because we're not having SLOs this year because we don't have the data from last year, they've gotten rid of that. And this technically is kind of like replacing that, except I think the data will be more valuable.
That is more valuable, it comes exactly from state test questions, it looks like the state test. And like you said, we're not actually adding testing to kids' plates. Yeah, if I was a tested teacher, I would be on this tomorrow. And again, all that data has been uploaded to tide, I think every teacher has the ability to do that if they are a tested subject. So, the next day, Mr. Altman and I self, we worked and tried to provide some Zoom training. You know, we all have been on way more Zooms here recently than we probably care to admit. But one thing, and you've got to understand, and I think we all know this, but when it all happened last year, it wasn't remote learning, it wasn't remote teaching, it was crisis management. We've never done this before, we're not trained to do it, kids weren't trained to do it, and our teachers weren't trained to do it. And, you know, I saw a lot of Zooming going on and as it went on, it was less and less interactive. The idea was that Zooming would be interactive, but it's really tough to do that. So, Mr. Altman and I had a lot of research, we kind of played around with a lot of Zoom's new features. And we found ways to try to show teachers different creative ideas that are out there to make Zooms more interactive, to give your control of your computer to the kids and have them annotate your screen and help write problems up. Utilize it like you would a board on your projector in your classroom. There's polls to get feedback from kids and different ways to ask questions and how you can set your Zoom expectations up. So, I thought it was a good training for those teachers and I think if we do go remote, that's something that we'll have to continue to work on improving our Zooming here. And then the last day, after four long days of work, we decided to do some team building with the staff. And what we did is we put on a road rally and we broke them up into teams of four to six people per group. And they had to go to nineteen stops around town. And they were based off of clues that the admin team had put together. And then once they solved the clue, riddle, they'd drive to that location and they had to perform some sort of a task. It may be fighting or singing the school fight song, it may be taking a picture going down Mr. Slattery's favorite hill as a child. You know, a variety of different things, some of them funny, some of them educational. And the idea was just to create some team building opportunity for our teachers. But also that it kind of builds some community relations and know our town a little better. You know, you'd be amazed how many of our teachers don't know where Froggy Park is, or how many of our teachers have never been to different areas in town, or where is the old high school at? And so, this was our kind of chance to show some of the school history, some of what we've done, and they had a blast doing it. Okay, they got some chance to go drive around, the fun was really good. I think it was really informative. Like I said, a lot of our teachers had never, had never been to some of these areas of our town or had never, haven't spent a lot of time there. So, they had to go do different things, different fun activities, and to give us some team building, a good way to end that Friday. So, that was kind of what we did during those PD days. The last thing I wanted to touch on just very briefly is, I just gave the state of Ohio credit, I'm going to take it all back. They decided to still put out a state report card even though we have no data to look at. So, I don't know if you saw it, yes, this last week they did put out a state report card. The only things on that state report card are the things that I've checked for there in green, which are basically the four-year graduation rate, the five-year graduation rate, enrollment and attendance for students, educator information as far as how many educators you have and what they're doing, what they're licensed in, how many years they've been teaching, that kind of stuff. And then school resources and school funding that are as well. So, nothing major, but they still thought it was a good idea that they had to put up everything so we don't have that. Any questions that you guys had on PD with this?
Thank you very much.
Good.
Very informative. Hey, Mr. Schaefer, the technology report.
Right, um, I think it was like, so we were so, before school started, we had gotten an application for a broadband connectivity grant from the state. And I kind of looked at it and looked at some of the criteria and talked a little bit with Matt and just some of the things that they were asking, we weren't sure what it was going to be for us. So, we went, I went and talked to Keith and we were kind of sitting there and brainstorming. And after that, we did the application right then and really kind of thought how we could use this and meet the guidelines of the state. So, basically, these funds have to all be spent by the thirty-first of December. And they have to provide connectivity for students at home that maybe don't have internet. And so, we had to provide a way for that to happen. So, we kind of looked at needs of devices and how we could make these devices fit the grant. And so, if we were, the device had to be able to connect to the internet without using another device, so it had to be cellular enabled. So, we decided, well, K through one, even the number of kids, so how about if we see about getting iPads for that group of kids that have this connectivity? So, we applied in the grant, we wrote it for two hundred sixty iPads that have cellular connection. Then we thought about school buses, other districts are using school buses, they may park them throughout the town, they're Wi-Fi enabled, so that kids could go wherever the bus is and connect there. So, we put in six devices to be able to have our school buses Wi-Fi enabled, connected to AT&amp;T's network. And then, thinking about students, maybe that we could just have SMTA if we go remote, they don't have internet, have them hook up internet. Those houses while we're remote, so we wrote in, just approximately below, we might have this many kids. And so, when all was said and done, it was like, originally we sent in.
Well, we did enough, I wanted enough iPads for K one-two.
Right.
Though we asked for twice as much, hoping I'd get what I wanted instead.
Exactly. So, we went K through six, so I think we applied for, it was like two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the grant was approved, but it was sixty percent less. So, it came back and we were approved for a hundred twenty-eight thousand, which got us two hundred sixty iPads, the bus equipment, and the ability to connect any students with SMTA that we may need to do. Again, all this has to be set by the thirty-first. So, if we don't go remote and we don't need some of these things, the money just goes back to the state. iPads were actually ordered, they are a four to six week shipping time, so they should be here, I hope, by the end of October. And then we'll get them all set up and everything in the hands of the kindergarteners. We do have to activate cellular, even if we don't need it, the grant says you have to do it if you want to keep the iPads for at least the duration of the grant. So, we probably won't have those iPads ready to go by November first. So, our intent is probably to activate cellular for the month of December, that'll meet the criteria and then we'll just turn it off and if we would need it. So, if we had to send an iPad home with a student that doesn't have internet home, we could just turn Wi-Fi on that. And the cost for it is like thirty-four dollars a month for the internet, for the kids, that's a lot of data. So, kind of have that in the back of our head for that. So, that was the first grant. Then Keith talked with, it was somebody from the county, correct? For, it's a CARESAC grant for the Community Development Block grant. And again, they have very little guidance for it, but if we're a low HELOMI, whatever that stands for. So, basically, the income level was a certain and we, our community falls at that point. So, she says, probably a very good chance that this grant will come out positive for us. So, we went ahead through this and we've applied. So, this one's applied for, I'm not sure what the timeline is from the state or the county, so not sure of any kind of improvement timeline. But some things we put in this grant, cases for the iPads that were bought with the other grant because the other grant wanted to cover a case because it wasn't Wi-Fi enabled, it didn't break the criteria. So, we're like, oh, let's see if we can use this grant to get some protection for these iPads. The temperature devices that we use right now, they're kind of cumbersome or whatever, so we're kind of looking at different avenues for maybe speeding up that process. I know Mrs. Kaufman has looked at a couple of devices where it's like a tablet of some sort, it just kind of scans the kids and does the temperature that way, a little bit more accurate than the infrared ones. So, we've added temperature devices to this second grant, we put some PPE in it, more disinfectants, NOVA personnel salaries. So, like twenty-six percent of Mr. Lawrence's salaries could be covered because that's what the time he spends, spends working with our HVA kids. And then the new physician where she's working, the, yeah, Stacy, is working with the special ed and everything with the HVA as well. So, that's how we could a hundred percent hopefully cover what the grant were approved. And then, because we had to push our lunches and do some shipping, the poor kindergarten and first grade kids, they don't eat till like an hour or so after they normally do. So, we wrote in snacks for these kids to kind of help them get through the day before they go to lunch at almost one o'clock maybe.
Twelve thirty.
So, we wrote that in. Altogether, it was about a hundred and four thousand dollars for this grant. And we don't know, again, moving will be approved, but hopefully, so get some monies out there, help us through the situation. That's kind of what I've been doing.
Good work.
Yeah.
Yes.
For sure.
Grant writing, that's wonderful.
So, I have a question on the iPad and the connectivity. So, the money has to be spent by December, so what about January through May of connectivity charges?
What they kind of implied, and we can't, you know, we don't, we have no idea what's happening with this whole situation. They kind of implied that maybe if this is ongoing, they may extend that so that we'd be able to use the monies after, they may put more grants out there. I would assume if this continues past December thirty-first, there are going to be other grants that they're going to throw at us. So, after the thirty-first, I honestly don't think it would be that many kids that we would have to provide the connectivity for, maybe a handful. So, if we would have to do it out of general fund or whatever, hopefully it wouldn't be that big of a kid to do that.
Did we look to see if there was, did we apply for any of that CDBG grant? Access?
Did what grant?
The CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, the second one. Did that include any of that?
No, because we, yeah, we didn't put any connectivity things in there because we, our list just kept growing and running, growing. And there were, like, we had five or six points that we could fill for the budget on that second grant. And we kind of had to smoosh some things together, so we were trying to get other things that didn't fit into the connectivity grant into that second grant that the other one, that the first one went to cover. So, we didn't put any connectivity fees into the, that second grant.
Would having the buses set up Wi-Fi connected, wouldn't that help with the kids that don't have something past December?
Absolutely, because with the buses, that was, per bus, it was for the year. So, we have the internet there for a year and then after that, we thought about, it's like, okay, we can send, so we had six that we ordered, we could send four back and keep two and have one on a bus that travels to like the sporting events and keep that for kids as they're traveling back and forth, they would have connectivity. Now, they do block like YouTube and videos on my desk, so they keep it strictly entertainment, or educational, and they block all the entertainment stuff. So, just depending on the assignments, like, they wouldn't be able to get to YouTube, but they would just have to keep that in mind for assignments. So, that was kind of an idea with the bus, but yeah, a lot of communities, they do, they park them around the town and then the kids are able to connect at that point.
The library. The library did that this summer too with a similar situation. Where they took their vehicle and set it up and then they drove around to certain spots. I know in Pearmount, there's one of them.
Yeah, they did it in Sherwood and here and, yeah.
Yeah. Same defines. Trying to make it all work. Okay, principal reports, Mr. Altman. Want to make sure your mic is on?
I'd like to start out by first highlighting some things that's going on in the middle school. Mrs. Chamberlain, our guidance counselor, has created a rise-up theme for this year. Each letter in "rise up" stands for a different word that's used to guide the month. This month's letters are for resilience. Our teachers are using the word resilience as talking points to help students handle challenges as they face this year. She chose to have this theme rise up just as a way to come back together as how things ended last year and to just tackle the unknowns. It's going to help give us some positive things to focus on as we rise above the challenges we face this year. Another great thing that's happened in the middle school is Mrs. Van Horn has a seventh grade community class. And their class has decided to host a canned food drive for Christ covered. They're hosting a live drop-off location for the canned goods near the main event entrance each morning. And then local businesses have stations where you can drop off cans as well, and those we picked up on Wednesday. Picking back up what Mr. Hunter was talking about with the remote plan, our K-12 building is finalizing the remote plan. And this week I've been meeting with the specials teachers to really hone in on our expectations of them for remote in case we go that way. Some things we're discussing are attendance pieces, grades, teaching content in a cross-curricular manner. So, that way they can still get their content in, but also work with the core content teachers, trying to promote how we could do this together and make it exciting for all. And then also just making their class fun and engaging, that way they can support the social, emotional needs of the students that they might not have during times like that. We're also discussing the remote plan with our core academic teachers in collaboration meetings within the next couple of weeks. During those meetings, we'll be discussing attendance pieces, grades, common forms of communication like Padlet, and weekly schedules, including office hours and synchronized and asynchronous Zooms and lessons. We found it's very important that we need to have synchronized Zooms, but also have the ways that we can do those at a non, at a time where they can access that at their own time. Our middle school has also started implementing the restart readiness assessments that Mr. Hunter talked about. We've had two teachers now already assigned those to their students and they took them. And they were very pleasantly pleased with the results they got back. The content is broken down in very good ways for them to drive their focus for teaching throughout this. And they're also hopefully excited to use these readiness assessments as they close to this new testing. That's all, pretty much all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Altman, Ms. Kaufman.
Well, the K-four students, we've had a great start to the year. With all the added mandates, it's been relatively smooth. But a huge shout out to Erin Montgomery, the elementary school counselor. Her experience is in high school, but I think she was made for the elementary position. I mean, she's just very creative, she's my right-hand partner. So, with her help, we were able to meet with every class the first day of school prior to lunch at ten forty. And they came down to the commons so we could show them their seating arrangements because everything's assigned seating. Talked about expected and unexpected behavior in the commons and then they transitioned out to the playground so she could do a little presentation out there. So, we did that all morning long before the first lunch, I think I got done at ten thirty and they started coming through at ten forty. But it really, really helped make everything run smoothly. I actually like the assigned seating, I think the kids eat more, it's, it's just not as chaotic down there and it's just a great place to be during which time. Also, like, when she took them outside, then she was able to show them the procedure to line. Also, like, when she took them outside, then she was able to show them the procedure to line up. Everything that we do is an A-B-C order. Everything is very strategic, but it's just working very, very well. We got a big donation from the United Way and GM. Typically, they pay for kindergarten camp, and since we were not able to do kindergarten camp this year, they went ahead and gave us the donation that they would typically give us for kindergarten camp. And I let Mrs. Montgomery take it and utilize it. And she purchased tons of games, tons of activities for the kids. So when we have indoor recess, because we had to kind of restructure all of that, because we can't put all of the kids in just one classroom, so I had to find coverage. And so we have everything set in place for when that does happen. But she purchased about two thousand dollars worth of games and activities for the kids. So while we're not using it for indoor recess at the moment, she has made an acronym GAMES, which stands for Games and Activities Made for Elementary. And she surprises the kids. She doesn't announce what days those are gonna be, but about a week and a half ago, she had a, the Grass's Lava Day. And so, you might have seen some pictures out on Facebook, but she went out with every single grade level, played with them, and they're focusing on, you know, following directions, taking turns, sportsmanship cheering on, you know, the kiddos if they fell in the lava. So, she's just done a lot of amazing things this year, so I just really appreciate her. She just finished up her schedule to start her sessions. And she does things very differently than, I think, like what I was used to with our other school counselors. She is doing bi-weekly sessions with the grade levels. And they're all, it's, it's kind of set up like our related arts schedule. So, always from nine to nine-thirty is a specific class, bi-weekly. And then on the off weeks, she uses that as small group for maybe that grade level. And she kind of lets the year progress to see like our kids dealing with anxiety issues, you know, trouble with, they come from a broken home, where maybe they've lost somebody significant in their family, and they're trying to deal with that. And she uses then that time to meet with small, small groups, so they can find other friends that are dealing with the same situations that they are. She's also our building test coordinator, so we are in the process of scheduling our gifted testing for second grade, which is either going to fall right before the third grade fall air test, which is scheduled for October nineteenth and twentieth, or it's gonna be right after that. We are also looking into the readiness assessments that Mr. Hunter spoke about. I think how we're gonna utilize it is, the fourth grade teachers are going to utilize, take the third grade test in October as well, just to kind of see where the gaps are, and then take it then closer to the third grade test. Speaking of interventions, we are very fortunate to have three full-time title teachers this year. One teacher services our kindergarten students. One teacher services our first grade students. And the third utilized, the teacher services our second, third grade students. Then we're fortunate to have another individual who gives us three days a week for our blue curriculum. This is a curriculum that we implemented about a year and a half ago. It's a multi-sensory approach to the monics. And so she's able to provide intervention to some of our title kids Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They just finished their star testing on Friday, so their services will actually begin tomorrow. And then just a little note on our computers, our one-to-one computers for third and fourth grade students. Unfortunately, they're on backboarder, but they're projected to be here in mid-October, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Slattery?
Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Altman stood up to give his presentation. I thought about the Hicksville Essentials, and I thought I might need to stand up myself. Thank you for challenging all of us, Mr. Altman. First off, you know, again, I think, you know, as an admin team, you know, this has been definitely a challenging year to start off, and I think that our team has done a great job. And I really do enjoy working with, you know, Kirsten and Mr. Kuncherman, and of course, Mike Altman joining us, and it's, it's been a great start to the school year. As Mr. Hunter said earlier, you know, the in-service days, I thought they were very valuable. I appreciated his efforts in kind of helping us lead and helping lead us in those, those days. A few things I think are important to point out that maybe he might have hit on, but I want to say one more time is, you know, it's not just about training the kids, okay? It's about training the parents. And I know the ESC has an idea that in the future, if we do go remote, they're gonna be working with local school districts, not just Hicksville, but other districts, and providing training sessions for the parents to understand exactly what Padlet is, what is Zoom, you know, all those different platforms that we're gonna be using. I think that's great, and we appreciate, uh, Mr. Hunter and the other ESC people listening to some of the challenges that we're, we faced in the past in the spring, and of course, are looking to potentially face in the future. Opening day, as Kirsten said, you know, our primary focus was to educate our kids. And, you know, we, we ran on a regular school day with a two-hour schedule during that day. The kids all arrived when they're supposed to. And, you know, it was educate, educate, educate. And we took the time to talk to our, our students about masks and how they're going to be used. And, you know, and I know sitting in this room, I'm sure, you know, we're all being very, very socially, you know, distancing and aware of what we're doing. And the kids, you know, all day long having these on, it's forever. You know, so we tell them, it's okay to take a break. So it's, it's okay to take a breath, you know? And as, as staff, we're not here to, to discipline these kids. We just remind them and remind them and remind them. Because, you know, again, this isn't ideal, this isn't something we want. So again, we're being patient, and we're educating our kids every day on that. The assigned seating piece, I think, is going very, very well. We do that, you know, in all the periods we offer today. And as Mrs. Kaufman stated, lunch this year's been amazing. The social distancing, the extra tables we brought in, the kids have been awesome. There's fewer messes so far in the cafeteria, fewer discipline problems in the cafeteria. It's been really good, and I really do appreciate the kids all stepping up and doing a great job, so thank you. Hallway procedures, there's certain things that we do not have, you know, total control over. And, you know, when the bell rings and we get all the kids in the hallway, it's a little bit tough to socially distance. Luckily, our staff has stepped up. I know, for example, a perfect example would be where Mr. Davis, Mr. Blue, Mrs. Gurkin, and Mr. Gehagan are at. Those are four core content classes. Every day, there's, you know, eighty to a hundred kids in those four classes. When the bell rings, eighty or a hundred kids come out and they want to go in. So, we're dismissing a minute early, half a minute early to relieve some of that congestion. We, you know, we talk to the kids about using the hallways as a road, you know, stay on your side of the road. And then, of course, you know, the, probably the biggest congestion we have throughout the school year usually is when lunch begins and ends. And we're dismissing our seniors three minutes early, our juniors two minutes early, one minute early, and then the freshmen are on time. And then, of course, once we're down in the cafeteria, we're dismissing all of the kids from the closest to the main event doors first, so they're not passing each other all the way out and streamlining. Because usually with bottlenecks there, and we have a total crowd, we've eliminated that, which has been awesome. And again, the kids have been great. A few other items, SmartPass, that's a new app that we're using. And if you've talked to any kids, it's actually, we're utilizing the technology they have every day on their phones, and it's been awesome. The students can actually create the passes and the teachers and the, the office. And if a student needs to use the restroom, they create a pass, they have five minutes. They have to set their phone down on the teacher's desk, and they walk out. It's amazing how much quicker they come back. They could do one-way passes, they could do round-trip passes. What's also neat is, you know, if I need four or five kids on Friday, I can create a pass for those four or five kids and send it to them now for a future pass. And then they receive that pass. And then, and, and, you know, once they receive it on their app, then they can go to their class and say, hey, I'm supposed to report to Mr. Slattery at two o'clock on Thursday. And the teacher's like, cool. And you can also, you can do like a destination and origin selection, and I can include the teacher on that. So they're also aware of active passes. And then the really cool thing is, there's a hall monitor tab. And that hall monitor tab makes it really neat, because I'll be walking down the hallway, and I'll see three or four kids out, and I just go to my office, sit down, hit hall monitor, and it shows me every active pass in the school. And it says exactly where they're supposed to go, and it says if they've expired, if they're current. So it's, it's been really neat to see the, the effect it's had on our student body. And, and again, I, I appreciate the kids. I think they enjoy using it, because it gives them a, a purpose to use their phone that, you know, academic in nature, and it helps us all out. So, again, that's been a pretty awesome change. And then, of course, you know, as you know, we're doing the temp checks every morning. And we've gone through three weeks of temp checks, we're getting better at them, becoming more efficient. We actually just restructured our process and our locations of our staff. We're able to create a rotation now. And of course, I'm sure Mr. Kuncherman's gonna head up on some, a few things later on that. But again, we're evolving and getting better at that. Another item on here we're looking to do, and this has kind of been discussed just briefly, but we're hoping to do a virtual learning day, where, you know, an example, and I'm not saying it's exactly how it'd be, but if, if Mrs. Mazzer has a class, and I have a planning period, okay? And I could go sit in her classroom, she could go to my empty classroom and do it remotely with her students on-site. That way, we can troubleshoot, we can see how well it worked, we get through all those, those problems and concerns, and work through with our, with our staff and students together while we're on campus. Because again, we hope it doesn't happen, but if we do have to go remote, we want to make sure that we are prepared as a staff and of course, as a student body. Update on the Hicksville Virtual Academy. We're still roughly at six percent of students involved in that. We have had kids come back, we've had a few kids leave. I believe, Mr. Kuncherman, correct me if I'm wrong, last Friday is like the last day we're allowing anyone to leave our district to go to virtual reality, or Hicksville Virtual Academy. And then we've discussed our deadline for the second semester, which potentially will be December first. So if you want to do virtual second semester, December first will be the deadline for that. And we'll go through all the processes, just like we did in the summer, for the students that are doing that. And then, of course, athletics. I can't say it enough, community, parents of Hicksville students, thank you for your understanding, thank you for working with us. It, it hasn't been fun, limiting attendance. It hasn't been fun, you know, asking parents to put masks on and doing the announcements and all that stuff. But Hicksville's been great, and I've, I've heard some nightmares from, from some other school districts. And I think overall, things have gone very well here. I will say that I applied for a variance through the state about two weeks ago for the homecoming game. So we did have more fans, roughly sixty-five, seventy more fans were allowed into that game. We gave all of our seniors four tickets. That way, they could have as many people there as possible, because senior recognition night, and of course, the homecoming festivities. And moving forward, we're actually allowed to use that variance for the remaining home games. The problem is, we don't have any guaranteed home games. So, we'll see how things go as the year continues. And then, of course, whether it be homecoming, I want to say congratulations to our homecoming corps, and a special shout-out to Queen Kelsey Monroe and King Landon Turnbull. And I also want to say good luck to our golf teams. It's hard to believe, but GMCs are tomorrow. You know, for our golf team, sectionals are Thursday, I believe. You know, cross-country in another week or two is gonna be competing in districts. So, good luck to all our athletes. And again, I can't thank the student body enough for how the year's gone so far.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Slattery. I do not have a four-county update, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Well, kind of like what the admin team's already said a little bit. I, I'd like to start out by thanking a bunch of people, because this has been quite a project, getting that off the ground. First and foremost, I really want to thank the students. Mainly for just being here, it's so great to have them back in the building again. Like there's some life back in the building, and you can go out and see kids working, it's just been great. The teachers have done an awesome job getting things around and getting the year up and running. Our cook, custodians, bus drivers, the secretary's aides, anyone I've forgotten. Everybody's just been really great about making the kickoff to the year run as smoothly as it, as it can. Of course, my admin team, I don't know what we'd do without them. They, they hardly miss a beat. We, we, we work as a great team, and I think it's just awesome to have everybody back. It's the most important thing. And like they've all said, it, it really has ran pretty smooth from the very beginning. The temp checking, we, you know, we have that big rush when the buses unload. And so, we have several people that are addressing that. We have moved it inside, which I think on the cooler mornings is probably giving us a better accurate temp reading as well. But, not only the temp checking, but we have bus seating charts. The seating charts that they mentioned in the cafeteria. The bus routes have all been running smoothly. The bus drivers have all been great at establishing those seating charts right away from the beginning, because we, we have to have those, and so, that's been awesome. Jeff already talked about the grants, and he and I have spent a lot of time working on those. I'm really excited about that bus, connecting the buses, because it's not horribly expensive to continue it on afterwards for that monthly, monthly fee. And I think it would be a great thing for our, our athletes, like Jeff said, but also just for our regular routes. And some of our kids are on the bus for almost an hour. They would be able to work on homework or something on their way home from school, or on the way in, for that matter. So, I, I'm really excited about those, uh, bus, getting the buses hooked up. The, I sent this information out, it was kind of ironic, because today I received an email from Mrs. Turnbull saying that the kids didn't know anything about this free breakfast and lunch thing. But I sent it out to all the parents, I don't know, over a week ago, I think it was, and put it on Facebook and Twitter, and, did you get it? Okay. Well, she was saying that a lot of the kids didn't know anything about it. And the USDA has made it so that all kids are eligible for a free breakfast or a free lunch, and a free lunch, from now till December thirty-first, or until the money that they've set aside for this project runs out. So, today, I sent an email out to all the students, third through twelfth grade. And then I, then I got some messages from parents, what, what's up with this free? You know, it's like, you know, they didn't hear anything about it. I'm like, oh my gosh. So I told the kids, you know, I said, I'm not surprised you don't talk to your parents, you know, when you get home. But anyhow, the kids know about it now, and it's really a good thing for the school, so, and the kids also. But, yeah, every student, regardless of the parent's income, is eligible for free breakfast or free lunch from now until December thirty-first. So if kids are saying, hey, I'm out of lunch money, you might want to look into that. If they do want an extra, extras, you know, like sometimes there's extras, they purchase, those aren't free. Those they would have to pay for, so.
Do the parents have to fill something out?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, because nothing brought home, and it, it didn't say anything about it. It had all the financial stuff, I'm like, this can't be right.
It's true, there's no, 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 that requirement.
Ruth Ann?
Keep track of her. The reimbursement process of the school, but, yeah. Not for parents, no questions for anyone?
There has, if I may interject, there has been a program like that out there, except that you had to meet certain poverty requirement levels. And so, if like your direct certs for free lunches were forty percent or higher, you had the ability to make it school-wide, all free lunches. This basically through the CARES Act and the COVID situation, the federal government has allowed this to be extended to everybody, much, much like our summer program was, until December thirty-first, or as Keith said, until the feds say they've run out of money.
Traffic in the morning, actually, and afternoon's been pretty good. I, you know, shouldn't say that very loud, but I mean, there's always traffic out here in the morning and the afternoon at certain times. But for the most part, it's really been running very smooth.
I think, don't you guys think?
Great. The building out back.
Building progress. I encourage the community to drive out, like on the weekends, and swing around out back by the main event entrance and take a look. There's beams and stuff going on, so it's really exciting to see. Everything's right on track. Perfect weather we had, weather perfect for the farmers, which we could have had some rain for them. But for a building project, it's been great, and they, they're right on track. Things are moving forward perfectly. Eric, John, and I have a construction meeting every Wednesday. Usually they're not long, too long, and they're out back in their construction site building. And so, there, they let us know of any updates and any issues. So, that's great to meet with the builder and the architect, and the lighting guy, the plumbing guy, whoever's here for that particular meetings. My superintendent meetings are all starting back up face-to-face. We've been zooming all summer, and now we're meeting again back to ba, or face-to-face at the ESC. And they have protocols, just like we do with the masks and temp checks and things. But at least we're together again, which is a good thing. And then, speaking of the superintendents, I continue to meet with the five superintendents in the county, and with Jamie Gurkin, the county health commissioner. We meet on Zoom meetings every other week now that we're doing it with Jamie. But we contact her whenever we need to, and we, we talk to her weekly, for sure. So, she's, she's been really great. Like Andy said, we had her come over and, and talk to the staff during the in-service. So, yeah, I, I think it's been a great start to the school year, and I think everything's moving along perfectly. So, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
I just want, I think maybe Keith should take this time and remind the community because I know that we had miscommunication with the foundation. Just to clarify that, inside the building, the public is allowed access only to the walking track and not-
Right, right. That was a question in the new building. It was a question if the weight room would be available to the community. From the beginning, we talked about that, that our fitness uptown has weights at the hospital. And we never, we didn't want to take away from their businesses. And so that's why we limited it just to the walking track. So that will be available for the community. Usually have very intentions of doing that and having that open for that. Yeah, thank you, Steph.
I would like to have a discussion on that sometime. Because I kind of disagree with that. I would like to see that open to the public, just because I know that's what almost the rest of everybody that has a field house, almost all of them allow that. And I mean, the public paying for it. I think they should, we should come up with a system and a timeframe that would allow the public to do that. Now, it doesn't have to be today, but I just think it should be a discussion that we should have.
We can do that when we get closer to it. There would be some things we need to check out with liability.
Understand.
I agree with Craig. You know, I was thinking just, you know, Jeff, that his friends wanting to go play basketball or something, you know, there's really not an indoor facility. So I'm kind of, I know we've talked 1.2 about after we opened, waiting a while to see how things work and how the flow of things is before we start addressing some of those needs. So definitely something we gotta look at in the future.
Sure.
And also on the traffic, I was here after school the first day of school, and it was a nightmare. But then, when the message went out that evening, and I came back that second day of school, because I have to drive my child to Antwerp, so I boot scoot back here. And it was day and night.
Night and day.
It was wonderful. The second-
Not to interrupt, but it's funny because we, I jokingly say this, I always say, you know, the kids are easy. Sometimes it's the adults that are hard. It's like, if we're not out there every day telling everybody where they're supposed to go, people just want to do their own thing.
Oh, my goodness. Turn left, turn right. Don't take turns.
You know, and they don't understand, every car that cuts off that line, it makes everybody wait 10 more seconds. You know, they don't understand that whole traffic flow. And so it's a constant reminder to all of our parents, you know, I know it's not perfect, but if everybody does what they're supposed to do, we'll all get out of here a heck of a lot sooner. So I think we're not, I mean, at 3:03 when that bell rings, we're done now at about 3:10, 3:11. The last kid's in the car and they're heading out.
Considerably more traffic. I mean, we have more parents picking up their kiddos, which is good, and that's what we wanted. But we did not know, like, I mean, and all these new parents that had middle school and high school kids were showing up, and they were in the elementary line. And I mean, it was just-
I think even the staff, like, we have some staff that lead right at like 305, 306, our coaches and some other staff. And they've realized, the more people that go out there and they try to cut line the parking lot, that bogs it down too. So they've adjusted to wait just two or three more minutes. So, but it's been good. We're working through it.
That first day.
We'll see what happens when it rains, right?
I had a commoner question on the bus connectivity. Do we have an ability, or will we be able to track, like, how many users are using it? Because I'm just thinking if-
I'm thinking with technology the way it is, I would think that would be possible.
I would think so. I was just thinking, when you said about possibly continuing that, if we can track how many users we have and how many are using it, will determine, you know, will be a big determinant factor in if we continue that.
Right, right. I know that for sure, but I would think-
I would think so, too.
If you have an away game, you're in the bus, an hour plus trip, an hour plus back, I can definitely see how that could be beneficial. But you know, we'll have that free month there where we can test it out, see how the numbers come back, and if it's being used.
Yeah, because if they can, they can track each individual household's usage. I can't imagine them not being able to track the bus usage.
I think too, you know, these grants just keep popping up and popping up. So I look for more of them to come. I talked with Susan Back today for one of my Rotary brands. And there's a $3,000 Rotary grant we're trying to get that has to be connected somehow to, has to be COVID-related. So Vern and I are working on how we can tie that in somehow and then give us the money here at the school. So there's opportunities that are popping up all the time with grants from all over the places. So some of them, I mean, you know how grand writing gets sometimes, but some of them aren't worth the work. So, but these are all easy to maneuver through, so.
Good.
Mr. Countryman.
Yeah.
There's one thing I missed on here I just wanted to throw out. Parent-teacher conferences are in October, and we've been discussing this. And we're looking to probably do these virtual, as of right now. But we'll have more details hopefully in the next week to release to the community on that. So we've got to finalize how our plan there. We see the benefits of doing it virtual, the benefits of a lot of people coming in. We want to make sure we do what's right for our community of students.
Virtual.
Also, I've heard compliment, even though there are people that are frustrated right now with the online academy, they are very complimentary of the teachers here that are working with them to try and get through those issues. So, Mr. Lawrence, specific what was mentioned.
Okay, we'll move on to minutes and financials. I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph, thank you. Minutes from the regular board meeting on August 17th, 2020. And then the treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of August 31st, 2020, financial statements for August 2020, approve the amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021 as presented, a total general fund resource of $14,105,794.93, and total resources for all funds of $18,922,770.74. Approve fiscal year 2021 amended temporary appropriations as presented, the general fund appropriations of $11,658,867.51, and total appropriations for all funds of $14,631,039.99. Accept the following donations, $194.43 from an anonymous donor for golf, and $4,000 from United Way of Defiance County for COVID-19 activities.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you're going to answer my question. Why the increase in resources for all funds and item C and the increase in D for total appropriations? I see it was up from last, our last meeting.
Yeah. The receipts primarily are going up because of the grants.
Okay.
As we add those, and the broadband was $127,000. The student wellness success funds, we got bumped up this year. It's supposed to be $192,000 or so. That was added in there. So the general fund resources didn't change very much, like $1,000. Overall, it was grants. And then appropriations had been a temporary. And speaking of that, item D there, 2D, should be approved fiscal year 2021 permanent appropriations as presented. So up until this time, it was essentially sort of a makeshift number so that we can continue operations. Now this number, not that it may not get changed and will get changed because things are always evolving, but it's more in line with what you're going to see at the end of the year. I also want to just mention that we may be getting another BWC rebate, refund, that the governor has requested, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation Board of Directors to look at giving a 2019 policy refund. We already received one for the 18 years, a couple of months ago. And the BWC continues to do well as far as financially. And it's supposed to be voted on, I think, here at the end of September. So if that goes through, we should get, it looks like we'd be getting full reimbursement from the 2019, I think, policy here. And I projected that to be somewhere around $23,000 or so. So anyways, that's some good news that probably will go through. Maybe it won't. But like I said, they're looking to vote on that at the end of September. And if it does go through, they're looking to send the monies out like by the end of October.
Mike, I had a question on the lunch, breakfast, the reimbursement from the state. Are we looking at getting that monthly, quarterly, end of the year? I know, like title funds, we have to spend it all, and we get it after.
Well, the lunch is, Ruth Ann Pierman submits the paperwork at the end of the month. So once the month of September closes out, she sends her report. She's usually right on top of that, the first day, first business day. By the end of the day, she usually has that to the state. And then probably seven to 10 days later, the state reimburses us.
Wow, that's, that's great.
So it moves along pretty well.
That's scary, really fast for the state.
Knock on wood. But yes, it has been going pretty well as far as that goes. But it's key that Mrs. Pierman gets that done as quick as possible. And she has, from my month after month, she gets that done real quick.
She always seems very on top of all of her stuff. Every time we've talked with her, she's right there and knows what's going on.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yep.
Any other questions? Call for motion.
Okay. Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Need a motion for one certified staff?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mindha and Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve Sean Bergman to 11 years experience at the master degree level on a salary schedule for the 2021 school year. Recommend to approve all certified staff in grades K through 4 to provide after-school support to identify low-income and low-achieving students through the expanding opportunities for each child grant. Recommend to approve the following as Title I tutors for the 2021 school year at a rate of $115 with a maximum of 179 days funded through Title I-A grants. Brianna Color, Kate Haggerty, Melissa Miles, and Kayla Vetter. Discussion?
You said the expanding opportunities for each child grant. Is that new money? Is that a new grant?
Yes, that's a new grant. It's part of the CCIP, the application with Title I monies and IDEA money, et cetera. So that was determined based on, I think, the Title I criteria. And then it was based on the amount of that grant. And our share is a little over $3,000. Is it a little 3,000? Kirsten?
And how we decided to utilize it is, right now, we have after-school programs for middle school and high school students. So this would be provided for grades 1 through 4 for after-school intervention. Because I think you have to be low-income and low-achieving to qualify for it. So it would help those kiddos with-
Will parents have to pick it up?
Well, we have not gotten that far yet. The teachers don't even know about it yet.
Yeah, speaking, I just wanted to interject too, that, yeah, and Keith talked about it earlier. There's been a lot of new grants that have popped up this year that have never been there. So it's definitely been a work in progress that a number of us have been working with to try to stay on top and determine what's the best way to use those funds the most appropriately and still stay within all the guidelines and the federal guidance that we have to follow.
I imagine that itself could be a bold jump.
It's sad, considering, you know, how much kids lost. It's sad you can't use any volunteers. I mean, I understand, we can't have anything else in the village. I get that. But it's, you know, that's another way that people could have helped, but you just can't.
Roll call?
Thank you. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Need a motion?
I'll second.
Mindha, thank you. Recommend to approve Stacy Wagner as a part-
I'm an NOVA instructor for the 2021 school year at an hour rate of 1533 per hour with a maximum of 179 days.
What is NOVA stand for?
Northwest Ohio Virtual Academy.
Oh, gotcha.
That's technically who we purchase our HPA through. I think pretty much, my understanding is, I'd say 90% of the schools in the Port County area are using that.
So will she be like helping Mr. Lawrence? Is that what-
She's working specifically with Special Ed students right now.
What her titles, yeah. She grades the K6 material that comes in, and then she has her Special Ed license. So she does the K-12 Special Ed. And then he grades the 7-12. So she works four hours a day. She sets up student sessions with all of our Special Ed kids to keep their IEPs compliant.
So what would happen if school shuts down and then we go to-
They stay with NOVA.
They stack, okay, yeah.
Until the semester's done, and then they'll have the choice to come back.
Okay.
And how many kids do we have doing that?
As Special Ed kids or just total?
Both.
Well, fortunately, we had quite a few elementary kids come back. But special, like he said, 6%. We started out at the K6 with 37 kids. And if I could estimate, I'd probably say the 10 students have come back.
K6 for K4?
K6, because that's, that was Stacy's, is like 37 of her kids.
On the high school side, I think we maxed out at 12 first day. We had two return. They showed up, we provided lunch the first day. And then we've actually had a few kids who thought they were doing online school, but they weren't. They were just signing into their teachers' Google classrooms. And they thought that was online school. And it's like, no, you have to put it in the process. So we worked with them to get them signed up for it. But I think in the high school, I have roughly 10 students currently.
I have a friend, I think it's 37 K4, and then up to, it was 50 kids K6, that's what it was.
We have 16 kids in 7th grade.
That sounds right.
I'm sorry. How many kids, Mike?
16 in 7th and 8th grade, and we have 10 in 5th and 6th grade.
So fifth to eight is 26.
Can we give you an accurate number?
Yes, you want an accurate number?
That's good. Okay. Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Epstein. Motion passes for one abstention. Need a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph, Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2021 school year. Mike Blue, co-high school student council advisor. Emily Finzer, Hicksville Initiative House Leader. Chris Hagan, Hicksville Initiative House Leader. Joy Geiger, Hicksville Initiative House Leader and Foreign Language Club Advisor. Elaine Gurken, National Honor Society Club Advisor and Co-High School Student Council Advisor and Drama Club Advisor. Kathy Laney, Academic Team Advisor, High School Yearbook Advisor and Newspaper Advisor. David Moore, Head Wrestling Coach. Don Perna, Sophomore Class Advisor 1/3. Emily Reese, Junior High Student Council Advisor and Co-Science Club Advisor. Jared Wachbach, Elementary Student Council Advisor. Joey Stevenson, Hicksville Initiative House Leader and R Club Advisor. Heather Taylor, Junior Class Advisor 1/3. Mindha Trzynka, District Mentor, and Natalie Zachrich, Co-Science Club Advisor. Thank you for all of the teachers who spend a lot of extra time doing these wonderful Thank you for all of the teachers who spend a lot of extra time doing these wonderful things for our students. Roll call.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Need another motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Craig and Minda, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2021 school year. Steph Mazur, Sophomore Class Advisor 1/3.
And that should be noted that it's volunteer. Should not be paid. Sorry, Steph.
Yeah, I'm kind of used to it by now.
No doubt, you saved this district a lot of money, Steph.
That pays a lot.
Well, coaching, and she's not part of either.
Right, right.
Roll call.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Epstein.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes, motion carries for with one abstention. Need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
Second.
Galen. Recommend to approve Shannon Bolser as Long-Term Substitute Nurse for the 2021 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2021 school year. Eric Crawl, Sophomore Class Advisor 1/3. Danielle Myers, Junior Class Advisor 1/3. Amanda Ridgway, Co-Senior Class Advisor. Jamie Slattery, Junior Class Advisor 1/3. Pam Slattery, Elementary Yearbook Advisor. Jenny Turnbull, Co-Senior Class Advisor. Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Any old business? Any new business? Discussion?
I'm really happy with how smoothly the school year is going. I mean, that's what I have to say. Just happy that we're here.
Yeah, I was thinking about that earlier. I mean, really, when we think about countywide and the counties close to us, everybody's back to school, things are going okay. So.
Now we could just stop waiting for the other shoe to drop.
But it's just. Push ahead. But you know, I think, you know, we were all, like, nervous and all these things in place, and obviously, all the precautions we're putting in place are working, so.
And the kids are doing, honestly, a really great job with this whole thing.
Except when Mom forgets to make sure he has a mask, and she has to turn around and go get it on a Monday morning, and they're running late.
Well, I'm sure they have an extra mask here, though, right?
Yeah. Okay, any unannounced guests? Okay. We will be going into executive session for number one, to consider appointment or employment. We will not be taking any action afterwards, and we will meet again for our October 19th, 2020, board meeting at 5:30. So do I have a motion to go into executive session at 6:50?
I'll move.
Second.
Minda, Galen.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes, motion passes 5-0.